Would you like to address that since it's really your argument? Basically. Well, it's not, I mean, it's court decision, obviously.
Thank you very much and appreciate the opportunity to be here and for hosting this gathering, mostly of neighbors who are concerned about, you know, this project. This is the type of turnout that should have taken place at the planning board hearing, but there were process problems and notice problems. And that's what's led us here. First filed an appeal in Superior Court. After consulting with the town's attorney, we decided that it was appropriate to ask this board also to weigh in on the matter. My name is Sig Schutz. I'm an attorney. I represent Tanner Demers and Robert O'Reilly on this appeal. There are really four issues that I would ask this board to consider in determining whether there's good cause to waive the 30-day deadline for appeals. The first is that Robert O'Reilly bought property directly adjacent to this project site in August of 2020. He, no notice was mailed to him, addressed to him of the planning board hearings in May of 2021. A number of months obviously passed between the time he bought his property and the time of those planning board hearings. He should have been provided notice addressed to him of those meetings. And, and he wasn't. He is opposed to the project. He had a right to notice and to be able to be heard on his concerns and objections to the project. Because no notice was mailed to, addressed to him, he didn't, he didn't get notice. The second primary issue with notice that I want to raise is the fact that the list of abutters within 500 feet of the project did not include a significant number of abutters within, within 500 feet of the project. And as a result, they didn't get a notice. And the only way, as I understand it, to determine your abutters is to take the tax map, find the corners of the lot in question, tax map 10 light, Lot 5C, and take a ruler and draw a circle, you know, looking one, you know, about one inch out because the scale is one inch equals 500 feet on the tax map. If you do that, you come up with a significant number of additional people who should have gotten notice of those planning board proceedings, but didn't get notice of the proceedings. And we submitted a list of those persons. That's a process problem. Again, these folks are entitled to know what's happening within 500 feet of where they live. They didn't get notice. Doesn't matter who's at fault for that. Just the fact that they didn't get notice, that's a process problem. It ought to go back. The third issue that I want to raise is under your ordinance, there is a requirement of public notice being posted in the municipal building and on the town's website. And it doesn't seem to be contested that for whatever reason, notice of those May 2021 planning board meetings was not posted to the town's website. And, and that also is a notice problem. That affects the community's right to be heard and have their concerns weighed appropriately by the planning board. And the planning board wants to hear from, that's why you have a public hearing. So that's, that's, that's the third issue. And the final issue I'll raise is that your ordinance requires that notice be given by certified mail 10 days in advance of the hearing. Those certified letters were not sent such that they were received 10 days in advance of the hearing. And your, under your ordinance, the board shall notify property owners within the required distance by certified mail at least 10 days in advance of the hearing. And I would just submit that those notices came in where they came in the day before or something like that, not 10 days in advance of the hearing. You know, there are some other issues that I raised in my papers, but those are really the four reasons that we submit, or I would submit on behalf of Mr. O'Reilly and Tanner Demers, if there's good cause to look past the 30-day deadline for a remedy. We're not asking this board to weigh whether this project should go forward in the end or not. Really what we're just asking is for a new public hearing so that everybody can show up, be heard, their concerns, the community's concerns can be addressed appropriately in front of the planning board on the substance. You don't have to go forward with litigation, Superior Court, that can drag on and be expensive for many months or potentially years. And all those process issues go away if we just simply have a new public hearing. And that's all we're asking for. So that's, I'd be happy to answer your questions or comment on any of the other information that you have. But again, we just think it's a basic piece of kind of American democracy that the people should get proper notice, not as invented by me or as I would deem ideal, but just as required by, you know, your ordinance.
What about the August 18th filing in Superior Court? For, to oppose this project? What happens to that if we go ahead and have our hearing tonight?
That's moot. That goes away. That goes away.
Does that sound right, Brad?
If it goes, well, Jeffrey still has his own appeal going forward. I defer to Sig whether that, I mean, there's no doubt that if it did go back for another public hearing, we wouldn't be spending a lot of money while we're waiting for whatever the outcome of that would be. Right now, there's a request to actually talk with the judge about some of these issues. Depending for the court that hasn't been heard yet.
Yeah, I think because Jeff would have the opportunity to attend a public hearing, the issues that were of concern to this board would also go away. I would submit that that entire legal proceeding leads nowhere. That would be dismissed.
Do we have any comments about the timeliness aspect here? Or do you have, address any of those on your sheet of Patty or?
Some of them.
Okay.
The zoning ordinance in Section 8.3.5, which I gave you all a copy of, says, "The owners of property shall be considered to be those against whom property taxes are assessed. Failure of any property owner to receive a notice of public hearing shall not necessitate another hearing or invalidate any action taken by the planning board." I printed out a copy of the assessing card for Robert O'Reilly's property, Lot 9, Lot 31 dash 4, and I gave you a copy. I printed it out on August 31st, 2021. And that public notice got mailed to Carl and Karen Andrews at 5 Roberts Pond Road. That is the person who, to my knowledge, taxes were assessed up until August 31st, 2021. Public notices went to, there's a copy of the abutter letter that was mailed on May 8th. And there's a certification from the post office saying they received it on May 8th to be sent out certified mail to Tanner and Colin, Karen Andrews at 5 Roberts Pond Road. And there's others, but these are the two who are appealing. And there are signed cards for 5 Roberts Pond Road and Tanner. Tanner's has a date of 5/17 that somebody signed. The one at 5 Roberts Pond, there's no date when they signed. It did get published in the newspaper, the Portland Press Herald. It was published on May 8th. And that's it. That's all I have to say of all.
My initial inclination, I'd say, well, what the heck? We've got a great group here. We can't take questions at the moment here. Got a great group here. We could just might as well have a party tonight and go ahead and have a public hearing. You know, we're all here assembled, ready to do it. But on the other hand, we've got somebody that's could be investing a lot of money into this project already doing who knows what, at what stage in the process he is. And for people just to continue the song for who knows how long, it's not very fair to them either. So I think this bears a lot of consideration here, the timing issue itself, whether we should go ahead with the good cause argument or say, you know, that it looks like we did everything we were supposed to do as far as notification went. Maybe the post office didn't, I don't know. But it sounds like we did at least a tally at in the town.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for the record, I'm Edward Tickham. I'm the attorney representing David Als, who was, this is his project. The, whether or not the ZBA can entertain, in effect, what's being requested by the appellant, and that is a good cause exception to the filing of a late appeal to this board. Your zoning ordinance does not provide for that. The, the powers, if you will, of your zoning board of appeals are defined within the four corners of the ordinance. Most municipal ordinances are drafted in that way. There are a handful, if you researched municipal ordinances statewide, you might find some that do provide the authority for this board, you as, as members, to hear and determine whether or not there is merit to a claim or a contention that there's good cause to allow a late filing. But this ordinance does not, does not provide for that. The, the, the appellant's attorney has defined, really looked at four areas and has categorized them variously as notice problems and process problems. Whether, the merits of those positions are precisely the, the issues that the Superior Court reviews as part of what is now a pending Rule 8B appeal. Now, in fairness, the, the appellant's, in this case, the plaintiff's attorney Schutz represents, there are some independent claims for relief which cite many of, of the positions that have been articulated this evening by attorney Schutz. And it's, it's there. That's the form. That's the correct form for this. And it, this is not, it's, this is not something that presently is within the jurisdictional authority or the purview, if you will, of the zoning board of appeals. And so the next step in the process is for this to go forward in Superior Court. And there are, it is more than just an appeal. There, there are things that the Superior Court will need to address in terms of how the parties are going forward or how the parties will go forward. But this is a process that my client needs to have continue on so that he gets some finality. This is, he's been in this building and in this room with this project a number of times.
Yes. Understood. Yeah.
So I'm in the process right now of defending the town's decision right now from the zoning board of appeals. The good cause exception is actually part of their complaint and part of the amended complaint that's currently in front of the court. Attorney Schutz and I had some discussions about this. It's kind of a gray area of the law in some, in some areas. There have actually been some cases talking about whether a zoning board of appeals can hear the good cause exception themselves. And others suggesting it's just a judicial determination. Some of the cases that we're talking about, where they actually had the zoning board of appeals decide it, were lower court decisions. So it's not really clear that zoning board of appeals has that right. I think it's smart for them to bring in, bring the appeal, even if you shoot it down, because otherwise, what is there to bring in front of the court? MMA, as their main local land use appeals boards, they say that in the absence of language in an ordinance to the contrary, the board of appeals has no authority to change an appeal, period. When the appeal is filed late, the board of appeals must take a vote as a board at a public meeting of the board, finding that the appellant missed the deadline and denying the application on that basis. The person who filed the appeal may then appeal to the Superior Court. If the court finds that a flagrant miscarriage of justice would occur if the appeal were not heard, the court may remand the case to the board of appeals. And it cites a bunch of cases. As a general rule, as a general rule, the court will dismiss an appeal which is not filed within the applicable, applicable time limits. What they're saying is that there is a carve-out where the courts have said, if this is going to result in a miscarriage of justice, we can for ourselves waive that 30-day period. Like I said, it's unclear whether the zoning board of appeals can make that determination themselves. I would have to recommend that we don't make that leap. I think he would, might even have a stronger argument to appeal from that than they would if he did decide that. The board could hear, certainly hear evidence today about what took place. And that would help develop a record for the court to review if we went, if, if they do, you know, decide this issue. Right now, they're probably just relying on what the lawyers will have filed. So I think that's why this is in front of you, because you're, they're kind of stuck in the catch-22 of this good cause exception. So that's why it's here right now.
Any thoughts, Bert? Questions right away? Things you want to discuss?
Well, I'm looking on the supplied sheet here at note number two, Section 8.3.5. And it says, "Failure of any property owner to receive a notice of public hearing shall not necessitate another hearing or invalidate any action taken by the planning board." Seems to cover just about all of it. I mean, what, what can you do?
Russ, any thoughts?
Well, my initial impression was that all the, all the affected landowners were not notified. But I'm hearing now that it doesn't really matter.
I'm sure it matters to a lot of people.
I know. To them, legally, we don't have anything to do. I don't agree with that, but I'm not a lawyer.
When we get into the good cause exception, I'm reading all of this legalese and going, you know, this seems like it's above my pay grade. It might seem that we are exceeding our abilities here in the zoning board when we're discussing legalities such as that. So I do think that it might be in our best interest and best interest of everybody, actually, let Superior Court make a determination if this is a good cause exception or not. I know it's going to be expensive and some time-consuming, but.
But it seems like if.
I don't think it's a decision we can make.
No. Seems like if we make the decision to send it back for another hearing, we're still going to end up in Superior Court.
Well, we won't, but.
Yeah, I know. You got it, Tom.
Yeah, true. I don't know. That's kind of where I think we are at this point. Do you have any thoughts on that?
This is way past anything I ever thought I was going to get into when I signed up for this.
You didn't, you didn't realize you're practicing law without a law degree. Understand. So are you ready to make a, have a, somebody want to?
Make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. That's the word. Make a motion to vote on this.
And what's, what's the, what's the line item that we're going to vote for? To send it back or to send it forward?
That this appeal was not submitted in a timely manner, that we're not going to make a good cause exception because that exceeds our pay, pay grade.
Right.
And we'll let somebody that knows what they're talking about think about the good cause exception and continue from there. So something on that. Get your motion?
Sure. Let's make a motion to, take a vote as to whether we're going to send it back to the planning board or?
Let's, well, we wouldn't do that yet. Now, we're, we're just making a motion on timeliness here.
Timeliness, whether or not they received notice. And that's a consideration, too?
I mean, the timeliness of them applying for this public hearing within 30 days of the decision, they missed that because of the lack of notifications.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I got, I read all that. On several, several times.
Well, I, I think I'm going to ready to just vote on timeliness right now. And if it's not a timely thing, then we will just cease and desist at this point and let Superior Court determine whether a good cause exception is merit of this decision, which it may very well be. But I don't think that I can make that decision or we as a board can go that far and say, oh yeah, I feel like Superior Court judge today. I'll swallow hard.
I don't like it.
Yeah, you can vote either way you want. It's just that's the vote I think I'm going to take. And go from there. So a motion to vote whether to stop the public hearing at this point and let the, let the appellant continue this in Superior Court? That ZBA will not make a ruling based on just because it was not submitted in a timely manner. So, yes, like I said, I would say yes or no on.
So, yes, let's send it back to the Superior Court or send it to?
Well, we're not going to send it to them, but we're going to, let's say, let this word apply. We will, let all those in the, in favor of not continuing the public hearing due to not being timely. We will, no, then it would be, we would continue with the public hearing and we would probably be invoking the good cause exception because we'd be outside of the timely application. How about we, how about we say? How about we just say, was this appeal submitted in a timely manner? Yes or no? That's pretty simple.
Yeah, I'm with two minds that I'm reading this one here. It sounds like it doesn't matter.
Well, that's notification of the planning board. We're, we're talking totally different.
The application for this one.
The, you know, the appeal, the planning board decision. So I'm not, we just say that all those who think this was filed in a timely manner, yes or no? And that's no, then people pause and desist at this point. And let them decide what they're going to do and whether they want to take it to Superior Court or not. If they, if we say yes, it was in a timely manner because of good cause exception, then we can continue. Right? Does that make sense to you, right? So what are you going to say? Was this appeal submitted in a timely manner? Does that's based upon good cause? Well, like I said, good cause, I think, is going to be determined in Superior Court. We don't have anything in our books that say we can do good cause. Okay.
So one more time around the block, Tom. We got yes and we got no.
Okay, I would say. Let's vote on, yes, this appeal was submitted in a timely fashion. So.
Right.
Yes or no? Okay. Does that work? Mr. Secretary?
Yeah. I'm out of my neighborhood.
We got, we got the lawyers right here in front of us. They might be able to make a good suggestion.
May I be here?
You may.
It sounds like what you're suggesting is that your board, this board, doesn't have authority to make a determination one way or the other as to whether there's good cause to hear this appeal as timely. And if that's your determination, you know, put the record. But that seems to be where you're going with this. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I want to vote on whether this is a timely appeal or not. Yes. That's what, I would like to find out whether we as a board think that is. I understand the good cause exception, but nowhere in one of my books does it say anything about, well, there's a good cause exception.
You're not considering the facts here as to whether there is or isn't good cause. You're saying you don't have authority to determine that. What that, answer that question, yes or no? And so you're not going to entertain the appeal.
That's what I, that's what I think we ought to make at least a determination at this point, whether we should continue without, you know, if, if indeed this was not a timely appeal, then there's no sense in us continuing at all. In spite of the fact that it kind of makes sense in a way, except for good cause, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm not a Superior Court judge and I can't determine that. Nothing in my book says I can do that. I know your, your legal stuff there says there have been court decisions saying that good cause. But that's for Superior Court to say, yes. So I don't think that I can go ahead and rightfully say, let's continue this because I don't think that's fair to both sides in the, in the equation. Certainly impacts them. Certainly going to impact everybody here, but I don't have the power to make that decision. At least I don't think we do. That's, that's why I want to vote on it.
Understood.
There you go. So.
It was not.
It was not?
It was not.
It was not what?
Timely appeal.
Oh, okay. It was not a timely appeal. So we, we want to vote on that? Why don't we just make it, it was a timely appeal? Then we can vote that way. You wanted to, you were not, okay, you want to say it was not submitted in a timely manner? Is that what you want?
I want to vote and get this into Superior Court.
If they decide to go that direction?
If they decide to go that direction, God bless them.
Okay, so you're going to, the motion on the floor then is we're going to take a vote on this was not submitted in a timely manner? Okay, true or false? Yes or no? Get your motion? This bill was not submitted in a timely manner?
Yes.
So let's have a vote, all of those that agree with that statement? That it was not submitted in a timely manner? Not submitted in timely manner? Aye. It's going into the court. Aye. All right. All right. Let the record show then that the, the board is, don't think we have that ability based on all of our guidance that would be overstepping our bond to go ahead and hear this appeal at this point. And so we'll get that in a written decision, send it back to you guys. And we'll continue. You can, you can do what you will with that one. You know, obviously you're going to probably take that elsewhere.
Right. And again, to understand it, you're, you're deciding that you don't have authority to hear whether there's good cause to consider the appeal.
Well, I, I don't have anything in my books that says good cause.
Right.
I mean, I understand the other, your court decision say good cause. That's good for lawyers, but I'm not a lawyer and it's way above my pay grade. What's that? The motion was submitted in a timely manner. It's only managed 30 days.
Yeah, and so I'm just not here to present more evidence to you or call witnesses on good cause because that's just not something you're going to weigh in on.
Right. That's, that's above my decision level, I think, so.
Understood. I, I hear where you're coming from?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
If we were lawyers and judges and stuff, we might be, we might do that otherwise. We're just common people here, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could somebody please explain the rest of the process? I mean, I know it's not under your purview, but just for informational purposes, there's a project apparently that hasn't started. I don't know that it's been started. It hasn't been there since the planning board approved, approved this. But can someone? But can someone explain what the rest of the process is, just so we have some information?
The only process that I know of is that they have already filed this in Superior Court back in August.
Filed it as?
Filed an appeal to the planning board decision of approving this. And they're waiting, that's, you know, they're already getting inputs from Superior Court on making a decision on notification and all that other stuff so that they can decide.
That appeal was filed against the decision on the second application that I pressed it.
I think that's, that's a correct statement, right?
Yeah. It's an appeal from the second, the second approval. And so that's pending in front of the court. There'll be briefs filed by all sides and then the judge will make a decision. In terms of permits, those aren't suspended or anything during the appeal unless it's a court order.
So the, actually, the project, in fact, I guess, could continue if the applicant wanted to.
It is risk.
It is risk. Is there any other information or does the planning board have any part in that appeal process? We don't?
None, unless something comes back to them. A court could, if a court overturned it, they could remand back to the town. Sometimes it'll remand to ZBA to remand it to the planning board or something like that. But that planning board doesn't really have a role.
So the next part would then be what happened in Superior Court? That would determine whether or which way this thing goes?
That would be, yeah, what the judge makes a decision on it. That would determine either upheld or reversed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for attending. Let's conclude our public hearing tonight.